Recording in progress.
All set.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being conducted in an in-person format where all committee members are present in Simmons Lecture Hall. So that means that tonight we do not have to do roll call votes when we're voting. This meeting is open to the public. Any members of the public who are attending in person who would like to make a comment during our public comment period will be invited to do so at that time and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments. So with that, the meeting is called to order and we can move to our first item on the agenda, which is a vote to approve an out-of-state trip. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Courtney Kenny from the high school has a proposal for an Oliver Ames Social Studies field trip to Washington, D.C. This is an up-close program that you've been familiar with, it's been happening for several years. She expects approximately twenty students to attend in March, March seventh to, excuse me, March second to the seventh. The cost of the trip is one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. It is student-paid, but close-up offers financial assistance through a scholarship program. And Ms. Kenny is here this evening to answer any questions we may have about this trip. Hello, Ms. Kenny, how are you?
How are you? Good, thank you. How are you?
Great, thanks.
Thank you for letting me zoom in, I appreciate it.
Do you want to describe anything about the trip?
You know, as you said in my request, I've been going on this, this will be the fifteenth year, and you know, for everybody in the room here who would remember, I could kind of give an analogy where, you know, in continuing with musicals, but it has the same sentiment of when you would leave Shirley Darrell's musicals and you were like, there's no way they can make that better the next year. And then you go back and it's somehow better than it was the next year. And I think that it's just so important in today's political climate to be taught civic activism and more importantly, political discourse. So I think I've always felt that it was important to go, but I'm just, you know, in the current times, I think modeling that and meeting people from across the country is just that much important. And I already have students asking about it, so I'm just excited to kind of kick off the process that we can formally start hopefully after today's meeting.
So the foreign travel request is in your packets. Do you have any questions? I'm sure Ms. Kenny can answer them. How are the students selected to go? Is it anybody who is interested or do they need a recommendation or?
No, it's currently open. Some schools do things like that, but we've always just stuck to it, open grades, nine to twelve. You have to be in, you know, good standing with the school, so there is a process where, you know, we keep administration in the loop and whatnot. But no, there is no like selection process or recommendation, which is great. We tend to bring, I think just by nature of the course, we tend to bring more sophomores than the other grades, but you know, I think junior year is a lot and whatnot, and freshman year, they can be kind of nervous. But I brought four, all four grades every year.
Committee members, any questions?
I know they're jam-packed those three, four days that you're there, right? Five days?
They do.
They don't, they, yeah, I've heard stories that we didn't even get a minute.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I think that because Close Up was founded by former educators at their core and who, the people who built the program are former educators who have kind of chosen to leave the classroom and do this curriculum development. So I think more than anything, they understand that idleness is not a teenager's friend. So to your point, yeah, the program runs from about eight-thirty in the morning to ten at night, and then they have a little bit of downtime and then lights out. And you know, in our day and age in here too, I feel incredibly safe going on a Close-Up trip. There's the night monitors, you know, just sort of all the things that has a chaperone and a parent myself that make you feel safe to go. But yeah, it is, it is jam-packed because if you're there, let's see and do it all.
Well, thank you for going as the facility. That's awesome. I'm in favor.
Any questions or comments, Lauren?
No, I've always heard wonderful things.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so somebody like to make a motion then to approve the overnight travel for the Close-Up trip?
So move to.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll, uh, no, roll call vote, all in favor? Aye. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
If you need a chaperone.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of some new banner sponsors. Dr. Cabral?
Athletic Director Mary McDonald is presenting five new sponsors for the banner list that require school committee approval under your policy. They are in red on your list, it is, uh, an ad hoc test, a cycling company, title company, law firm, and landscape company.
Ah, nice to see a recent young alumni landscape and company on here. That's really wonderful, a great way to get back. Okay, any, any questions or comments on the list? Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the additional five names to the banner sponsor list. Can I get a second?
Luca, second.
And all in favor?
Uh, just raising your hand.
Raising your hand.
Yes.
All right, great. Um, next up, we have some minutes to approve. So the workshop from August fifteenth and then the executive session from the August fifteenth workshop. So the regular session for the workshop. Any questions, comments, or edits? This is really just opening the meeting and going into executive session. So would somebody like, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the workshop minutes from August fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
All in favor to release?
Yeah, this is just the public.
Okay.
Yep.
Just want to confirm.
So then the executive session minutes from August fifteenth. So I actually have something up on this that I want to discuss in a future executive session. So if nobody objects to that, I will make a motion to hold these over for a future executive session for further discussion. Can I get a second?
Second, Luca.
And all in favor? Aye. Uh, next on the agenda is a vote to approve a donation to Easton Middle School. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have a, and anonymous donor. Provide a three-hundred-dollar donation to specifically to the therapeutic learning center at Easton Middle School. They express their appreciation for their child's experience in the therapeutic program and wanted to support that program. And so.
Director Davidson is here to accept that donation, should you vote to accept it. But I've also asked him to present a few words about what the learning center is and what donations of this nature can be used for, for programs like the one at the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. We were very excited about the donation. A therapeutic and learning program provides social emotional support for students throughout the middle school and also at all four schools within our district. They provide some direct instruction on some social skills and social products that we might need support in. And we also are able to provide direct house loan services at a higher level through some of those programs. We would like to use the donation, if accepted, to identify areas of need within our student population that we could purchase some items within the classroom that can support some of those social emotional needs.
Okay.
Great. We're extremely grateful, of course, for someone to step forward and, and express their appreciation in this way, which is priceless, but also to, to offer a very generous monetary donation for use specifically in that program. And so it would be used specifically for that program in that school under Mr. Davidson's direction. Very generous.
That's really great. So thank you to our anonymous donor for your generosity and, and for wanting to make such a thoughtful gift to a program that'll really make a difference. Any comments or questions from the committee?
No.
Would somebody like to make a vote then to accept the donation of three hundred dollars to the TLC program at Easton Middle School?
I make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye. All right, great, thank you. Thank you for being here. So next up is our opening of school update. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. I will ask Chrissy Pruitt and even Director Davidson, he's here, if you'd like to jump in and, and add anything to this broad list. I won't give a lot of specifics, but the opening of school was relatively smooth compared to other districts and compared to, yes, and compared to even past years. We have had a lot of transition in staff with people retiring, and this was a year of some pretty steady leadership, especially at the central office level. And we were able to get a lot of things completed over the summer that helped for a really smooth opening. So we had both our summer school programs running this summer. In spite of that, our, our custodial teams, our maintenance team, the registrars, because we centralized registration at central office, so the beginning of the year, this is the first beginning of school year where we had it there. There were some technical glitches, but overall, it was a much better experience for parents, not having to go to, especially if they have multiple children in different schools, not having to go to different schools. We were able to, to intercede very early with families that, whose English first language may not be English. We were able to provide some extra resources that sometimes schools can't provide to people that we learn are coming from different situations or different places that might be in need of such services. And, and we were able to make connections. It was really nice to meet families that are coming in to register, and we've centralized everything and got it going the same way. The nursing staff, who did all of the necessary physicals and records checks for everyone coming in. We had a lot of influx of student registrations. In fact, at the very end of the summer, we opened up one more classroom in the elementary grades, which we typically don't do in grades other than kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, or grade one. And so we did one in an upper elementary grade, so we still have a steady influx of students, which is a great thing. A lot of people think that that's a problem for our district. We are in the kid business, we like having children, the funding we get from the state escalates with the number of students we have, so it's actually a benefit to the population as a whole to have more students in our district. So all of that was extremely positive. There are always transportation delays in the beginning of a school year, especially once kindergarten starts, because if anybody has had kindergarten children and they're getting on the bus for the first time, you know that that can have its own delays in it. Multiply that by the number of kindergarteners on a bus or parents who are having their own delays in getting that child on the bus, and, and it's just human nature and it happens. And it is an inconvenience and we are always sorry that that happens, but we, many of us have been there and we've all experienced it, and it just takes a couple of weeks to iron it out. And then we also had a lunch software glitch, but fortunately, we were able to work on that pretty quickly. It just meant that at the school level, parents probably didn't even know about a glitch. Students were all fed and got their lunches. It was just a software glitch in terms of our usual system of teachers reporting who's having lunch, who's not having lunch. So we did the old-fashioned write it on paper for a little bit, so, but if those were our worst things, we'll take them any day of the week. Other than that, we had the typical march of the kids in with their shiny new sneakers and their backpacks and their fresh haircuts and very excited. The staff, it's really clear, everybody had a great, refreshing summer, even if they worked over the summer, it just, it's summer. And they were able to spend more time with their families and get some downtime, and there was really a lot of great energy. We did start this school year with a theme of being the coffee bean, and we're trying to spread that theme, and we hope that they will be using it with their students and perhaps students will talk to their parents about it. So we would like our parents to share in the theme as well. And if you kind of Google search the story of the coffee bean, you can see that it is about circumstances that we can't control, like boiling water. And if you put a carrot into boiling water, one result is that you become very soft. And for a person, that is symbolic of letting things compound and, and being harmed and hurt by your environment instead of being part of your environment. The other example is putting an egg into boiling water, the boiling water being the challenging environment, and an egg in boiling water will get hardened. And some people can be very hardened and, and shut off some of their environment if they find it to be high pressure. But we're encouraging everybody to be the coffee bean, so that when you put coffee beans, even if they're not ground in hot water, the coffee bean is totally unaffected by its quote-unquote "environment." In fact, it changes its environment into something wonderful. Into coffee. And so we're encouraging one another to be the coffee bean. We were able to use some granted money to us for the purchase of coffee mugs for every staff member. And Lynn Souza manually put three coffee beans into a tiny container as a reminder for everyone, times six hundred, and smelled like Tim Horton coffee for about a week and a half, which is a good thing that we all really like coffee. But so we are hoping that people will use that as a little reminder to have their coffee beans with them and when circumstances are tough, because they are going to be, that is the nature of the world, whether it's personal or professional, things are going to get heated like boiling water, and it's really important we remind one another to, to be the coffee bean and not let our environment affect us. So we're going to try to help each other with that this year. That was our theme, and we, the last thing I just wanted to mention was that we sent out our first staff newsletter, we'll be doing that monthly from central admin, and we're going to be sending our parent newsletter. We are aware that parents get a ton of information from their child's school at the beginning of the school year, as they should. We're going to let that die down a little bit, and then we'll send them our first newsletter so that they can get our news as well. Some of it will overlap. We ask people just to skim it or to save it as a reference. We want to make sure, part of our strategic plan this year is solid communication, and we want to make sure that even if people are already getting information somewhere, we are kind of triangulating that and put it in lots of different places. You may miss it the first place, the second place, even the third place, but maybe you'll see it somewhere else. And as always, our new website has gotten great reviews. People seem to be finding things pretty easily, so check there if you're looking for anything, and if you don't find it within just a few clicks, please call the school or our offices, and we'll make sure you get the information that you need, because it's really our goal to make sure everybody has what they need. We know that everybody isn't sitting there reading every newsletter or email word for word, so we want to have repositories for things in multiple different places. But if you can't find something, just let us know. It exists and we'll send it right to you. And other than that, I have no other updates unless they would like to add anything, but it was a great start to the school year, and we are very, very excited about the positivity that students and staff are bringing to twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Do you have, and I should have asked you this in advance so you could grab it, do you have a ballpark for how many new students came over the summer? And I know we'll get like the.
Yeah, no, we, I can provide that to you. It's actually on my desktop computer right now because I, I have the tab open and I monitor it daily. I can't tell you the count, but I can tell you, I can report it out at the next meeting, and I can tell you this evening. I can just text it to you. But the class that we opened up, for example, just that one class got over a dozen students in, just in the couple of weeks to end the summer.
So, all right, word's getting out.
It is getting out. And we, you know, we have had a lot of back-to-school nights recently, and especially at the lowest grades, there are multiple parents there who are expressing, "This school is amazing, we love it, we moved here for the schools." And so we are seeing that at the lower levels, certainly the numbers show it too, but they are specifically saying that they're here for the schools and we are absolutely thrilled to, to have them.
Awesome, good. All right, great, thank you. Okay, so next up is a vote to appoint a school committee member to the Envision Easton Community Master Plan Update Committee, which is a mouthful.
And pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, yes. So, so this committee is being formed because, let me just make sure there's nothing in our pack that had the verb. Reconvened. So there was the Envision Easton Committee that worked, it's a committee that had folks from different town departments and boards and committees and members of the public. And they had put together a, a ten-year master plan for the town, much of which has come to fruition. So the, the town has gotten a grant to update the master plan, so they are putting together a new committee to revisit the prior plan and to come up with a plan for long-term vision for the town in the future. And so the school committee is required to appoint a representative to this committee. They anticipate that the committee's work will take place over the next two years and that meetings will probably be monthly and meeting, you know, the, the days of the week and the times of the meetings would be determined by the group when they come together at the first meeting, which is in October. So I know we only have three of us here tonight. Of the two members who are not here, one is, so that she's not interested or unable to commit to this. The other expressed interest if nobody else, or willingness, if nobody else is particularly strongly interested or, or has the bandwidth to commit to this. So, folks here? Any thoughts?
I'm, I'm going to give it to somebody else.
Okay. A little overextended at this point.
Thank you, yes, yes, yes. You do have an awful lot of committee commitments.
Lauren, any, any thoughts on this one? If you would have the interest, ability?
I kind of feel the same way as Kelly.
Yeah.
I, I could, but I know she could too.
Yeah.
And we're both kind of indifferent about it, so.
Yeah, so I wonder if.
Is it possible to have an alternate?
Yeah, I wonder if it would make sense to, yeah, appoint one and then have an alternate, and that might ease the scheduling a little bit, because I know it is, you know, I would imagine these meetings would probably take place late in the day or in the evening, just, just based on how past similar kind of across-the-board groups tend to work. Either that or like the MBTA, you know, very early in the morning.
That was, that was a quick committee, too. It was done quickly.
Everyone needed to get the rest of their day.
I knocked that one off, right, yeah.
So yeah, maybe that would make sense to have somebody be the primary and then an alternate. Okay, so would you feel?
Or we could like job-share it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think we could maybe go back with.
Based on both of our availabilities, whoever can.
Yeah, okay, I think, I think we can go back to the town with that. So let, let me see, let me communicate that back to the town. So I guess we can take a vote here to appoint both Lauren and Kelly to the committee. One of, they will decide amongst themselves who will attend any given meeting, and we, I guess we can find out whether or not, from the town standpoint, that's acceptable or if they would need us to formally need somebody, the primary with an alternate or whatever, and then we can revisit if necessary.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so then I make a motion to appoint Kelly Persio and Lauren Loomis to share representation of the school committee to the Envision Easton Community Master Plan Update Committee.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great, thank you both for volunteering. Okay. All right, so then next up we have, on the agenda is a vote to appoint members to the Easton Public Schools subcommittees for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. So without all members present, I think we'll actually defer the vote on this to, to our next meeting or until the next meeting where all five of us will be present. But we can at least kind of discuss and sort of socialize which committees are, are school versus town, because we did already appoint our town representatives. And then maybe if, you know, if we want to hold over discussion for the future, or if, if anybody knows right now that they would like to come off of the committee that they are already assigned to, that may help with the other members kind of collectively gathering their thoughts before we meet again about something that they may be interested in, if somebody's definitely like, this doesn't work, you know, I can't do it, et cetera. So our school committee, so we have the Animal Assistance Therapy Oversight Committee, and I understand that's meeting next week, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so Lauren's on that. Are we removing the fee?
Yep.
Okay.
No. But it's kind of, we don't meet, so it's still, no, no, no.
Okay.
We're still doing things, but I, I wouldn't count that as a committee for me, do you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I'll stay on it, and we do things.
There's correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
In, in May.
Okay.
I know, it's bad.
Okay, all right.
It's not bad, it's just things change, so, okay.
So we have the naming subcommittee, so Nancy and Lauren are both on that right now.
Now, stay.
Negotiations, Jackie and I are both on that right now. Policy, Jackie and Nancy are both on that.
Yep.
The STEAM committee, is, has that been up and running? Is it up and running?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't had meetings yet this year.
Okay.
But that will be, that will be going out, those dates will be going out.
Okay, all right, so Lauren is currently the representative for that. The Superintendent Advisory Committee, that's been just a rotation of members attending those meetings as available. The School Planning Committee, I believe, is this, this is, oh, right, sorry, that's a town one, yeah, and I think it's dormant at this point, other than, right, so you have your final wrap-up for, okay, so everything else is town.
And, yeah, number eleven is also done, the MBTA is done.
Okay, all right, so we can remove that then from the list. Lynn, and if you could add in the new.
Envision Easton.
Envision Easton. Okay. Okay, yeah, I guess are there, I, I know again that we are, we're focused on the school ones because we did not reassign those from last year, but I guess if there are any town ones that are active, that folks are interested in not continuing on, we can discuss those too. So there's Audit Committee, Human Rights Committee, Municipal Building Committee, which you two are both on. Town Budget Subcommittee, which Jackie and I are both on, ECAT, that Nancy's on, and then Frothingham is by their charter, the, the chair. Okay, so is there any, any of these that, that people who are currently assigned as a representative definitely know that they are not interested or can't commit to continuing? Okay. All right.
I know what Nancy's thinking.
I know.
All right, so we will then, I guess, let's see, so we have a vote on the agenda, parliamentary procedure, do we need to?
We have to vote to table it.
Okay, all right, so I make a motion to table the vote for appointing members to the Easton Public School subcommittees to the next meeting at which all five members will be present. Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, and all in favor? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next up, we've missed you. Our student representative to the school's main update. Welcome back, Marvel.
Hello, thank you.
We are so glad that you were re-elected by your peers and, and have volunteered to come back again, so.
Of course. So all schools have been off to an amazing start, thankfully. For a little preview to the schools, OA has hit the ground running regarding fall sports and extracurriculars. So the fall sports, they have started competing and are doing an amazing job, not only statistically with an amazing win and wins, but they're also carrying really good sportsmanship, which has been really noted throughout the Hockmuck. Also, extracurriculars, they're retaining a plethora of student engagement, which is great. We were talking about it, and you know, like, this is kind of, you know, like, the, the year where it's like officially like COVID is like in our past, so a lot of, you know, things have, you know, kind of changed and, you know, went back to like normal in a sense, so that's great. Similarly, EMS is off to a great start as well, as their clubs and after-school activities are largely starting up and they. are largely starting up and then have been started up. And, yeah, you know, a lot of the kids are getting used to like different classes, you know, and all the things that come with being in a middle school. Regarding elementary schools, students are also starting to get a hang of the school day. Today, I was actually made aware of the Golden Bus Competition at Blanche Ames, which is pretty much like a reward system for the, the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong. It's like a reward system for the best behaved bus line while students wait to board their buses. So, absolutely, we will be, you know, keeping track of those stats and will relay those information that, you know, the future updates will arrive in a few weeks. With regard to Rogers and Obed, all the students are having a blast getting this school year started, although I know some third graders were a little worried about the transition from Blanche Ames to RO. I've heard that they're, you know, definitely feeling much better about it now, especially with, you know, their parent, not parent, teacher conferences, the back-to-school night, back-to-school night last Thursday. Overall, students are setting their goals for the rest of the year and are being reminded of their potential to thrive, which is also amazing. Happy to answer any questions, and this year, if you have any, like, if you have anything you want me or the student advisory board to like take note of particularly, we'd be happy to do that as well.
So, I do have a question for you as a high school person. At the, how is the new age block? How is, has, has it happened that if you have senior privilege, you've already been able to come in or leave, whatever?
I'm pretty sure, so I don't have, I don't have, I'm not taking senior privilege, but I've heard that they've gotten their forms, like, they just need like sign, like, they need it signed and all that stuff. So, I know they've gotten the forms, I don't know if it's fully in action yet, I think it might be, but I'd have to check back. Regarding age block, today we had our first, like, normal age block in a sense, because like our past age block was either like, like a run, like a rundown of how to get there and what to do, or like we also had like a, like a, or like emergency training age block. So, this was like the first, like, real age block, which is really nice, it's very refreshing as well. It was, I think there were a lot of mixed opinions, you either, it's again, like, it's, I, it's not really like a hit-or-miss situation, because a lot of people, we were just talking about it, a lot of people don't have, like, they still have the time to go after school or before school, so it depends on whether, like, you need the help regarding, like, what season it is, or like when you're joining extracurriculars, so it's really different per each person. Like, I was talking to some of the, like, the other teachers, and I was saying, like, around like a certain, like, around like certain seasons, you know, I'm not gonna be able to go after school, and I feel like I'd be able to utilize age block then, or like around like AP exam season, I'm gonna be using age block, like a lot more, so I think it's definitely off to, you know, like, you know, like a good enough start, where it's like everything's kind of neutral in its sense, but I think, you know, people are gonna grow to, to like it.
Okay, I, I thank you, because-
It's smooth with the scheduling and moving around. I think so, I think the only thing that's a little tripping a lot of people up is the, the lunchtimes, because they're off by like one or two minutes, like particular to each day.
And that's a memorized time.
Exactly, so we're, we're a little, exactly, we're a little, we're a little, you know, we're getting used to that, so, you know, sometimes we pack up early, sometimes we pack up late, but it's okay. But, yeah, I'll keep you guys updated on the age block, though.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I've heard that there's a little bit of confusion on the delayed start days, particularly, I've heard this with parents, that they don't, they don't quite understand the reason for it, or, and like, yeah, just the reason for it, so, do you find that with students? I know it hasn't happened.
Exactly, we haven't gotten, like, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't really gotten, like, the information behind, like, late start days. The only late start days that I know of right now are for like the senior privilege, like, if you have your, like, form side and you're good standing, then you come, and you can come in late if you have senior privilege first.
Is it not happen?
It is, we just haven't got it.
It's only once a month.
Right, okay.
And there's one month where there are none and one month where there are two. So, it comes out to 10 of them.
Okay.
And it's primarily for the staff to have common planning time, so that they can appropriately plan for what they're doing with their students.
Okay.
They can do cross-curricular connections, they can talk to special educators about making modifications and accommodations for students. It's gonna provide a much better level of service for students.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be covered with parents at back-to-school night? I would guess that that would be an agenda item, because I know at back-to-school night, Mrs. Kavanaugh had added a practice of, instead of just coming in and going through your child's schedule, there is a, a group.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a group, you, you meet in the auditorium first, and she does the presentation, so.
She also explained it a lot at the ninth-grade orientation for families, so the ninth-grade parents are very aware of age block that, that we're able to attend.
Okay, so maybe it's the 10 through 12 parents who have it.
But it's not age block, right?
No.
No.
Right.
It's the one day a month.
I meant the late start, yes, she explained both, actually, age block and, and the-
And she's really good with her newsletters, she has newsletters that go out, and she, we use Parent Square now, so everybody should sign up for Parent Square if they haven't already. It is very user-friendly, I know sometimes there's fear of the unknown, but it's very user-friendly, especially if you have multiple kids in different schools, or kids in multiple different schools, and she's very good about communicating that. But if there are any lingering questions, absolutely reach out to the school, she's more than happy to clarify.
With regards to the late start, I'm sure Ms. Kavanaugh is gonna like tell us more information, but what happens, do you know what happens with, for like the students that aren't very, like, they, they have transportation through the buses, so they have to get to school at like 7:55 or whatever the time is?
Yes, the buses are running on the regular schedule, and they will be, area, one area for students to go where they can work on homework assignments, they can study for tests, they can have that time for directed activities.
Thank you.
Sure, self-directed activities. And of course, breakfast is still offered, free to all students, so they have the opportunity to have a good breakfast before school, too.
It's hard to do real.
Thank you, Marvel.
Any other questions? We're thrilled to have you back.
Thank you.
Absolutely update.
Glad to be here.
Okay, all righty. Next up, schedule of payment, so since the school committee last met, we have approved invoices 104S and 008S, which are both routine operating expenses, and, I'm sorry, invoices, warrants, 104S and 008S, and then warrants 009 and 010 are working their way through the approval process. And I think there was initially a little bit of a hiccup with, with an attempted change to docket sign, i.e. I believe that's been worked out, but if you guys are getting warrant requests that you can't open or approve, please let-
Oh, I do.
Let, yeah.
It should be rectified now. At the last meeting, you had made a decision to kind of change up the number of people required, and so that was changed, and it was just a glitch, the way that it was put in was a little bit off, and so, thank you for letting us know. It was fixed by the business office-
I think you had, I think you had the three signatures, but you didn't have three school committee signatures. But, yeah, I talked to Andrea, so she said that they were all set.
Yes, thanks for letting us know.
Smooth sailing. Okay, all right, so no public comment this evening?
We have a resident in the audience.
I know.
Yes, with our- All righty, next up Superintendent Notes, Dr. Cabral.
So, I was gonna talk about Parent Square, I jumped the gun a little bit there, but I do encourage people to check out Parent Square, it is very user-friendly, whether it's on your desktop, or there's, there is a mobile app as well. You can easily toggle between central admin notifications as well as each of the schools, very, very easily. And everything is push notification, you can set it so that you get notifications only within certain hours, or you can get them when they come, or I do have an option as a superintendent to push the notification through in the event of an emergency only, when, even if you have it set for certain hours. So, all of our notifications from central administration are gonna be coming through that platform, and some things will come through the platform and email, but things like snow days, or in the event of any kind of emergency, or where we need to push out information quickly, Parent Square is where it's gonna happen. So, as I said, things may go out in tandem between Parent Square and email, but you can find everything in Parent Square as well, so I highly recommend that you put that in there. You used to get notifications through a program called School Messenger, so if that sounds familiar, this is going to take the place of that. And again, we, we really commend our tech staff for the innumerable trainings that they've done on this, there is a link to a parent training, and there is training available on our website as well. But we did send out an email through the Technology Department specifically for a parent training, so if you need any help, just let us know, we can navigate you to that link, and we've gotten a lot of really great feedback so far about that. And it put together maybe four different programs that we were using for different purposes in one area, which is, of course, easier for the consumer to use, but it's also less expensive for the district. So, the district is very thankful to the tech team, once again, for, for bringing that proposal to us, and we're excited about its use. I am going to need to give you an update at an upcoming meeting on the corkine surfacing on the RO playground. Unfortunately, it hasn't gone as smoothly as we had hoped, we're having some difficulty with the product, and so I will, I didn't have it on the agenda, I was at the site today with a bunch of vendors and landscape architects, so I'll have to add that to a future agenda, but I just wanted, if you're hearing anything about the surfacing, I wanted to let you know that we are aware of issues, and we are going, I'll get more information presented at an upcoming meeting. And then, I also wanted to let parents, specifically anyone involved in booster programs, know that, you know, we're fortunate, we have a lot of very strong athletic booster groups and organizations, as well as music booster organizations that are very beneficial to our programs. But we realize that there isn't much guidance for that, and it's a big job, and parents are typically involved when their students are in a school, and then understandably, they typically move on and other parents take their place. And so, there isn't a lot of stability in most of the boosters, and it's very difficult for them to contact past members to get advice or guidance, some of them are 401(c)(3)'s, or many of them are, and that has its own legal responsibilities. So, the AD of the high school, Mary McDonald, has been working, she worked all of last year, kind of collecting information about all the different boosters, and what they do, what they pay for, what they sponsor, how they operate, and she's putting together a guidebook, and we have a draft going, it, it looks great, she's done a great job on it, it's a tremendous amount of research, and I reviewed it with her and Kelly Kavanaugh, the principal, and we are making some adjustments to it, but it's going to be coming out this year, in the course of the year, and we'll make sure all of the booster parents get it, as well as other parents, just to know what should the boosters be doing, not doing, are they letting us know about things, can we ask about certain things? And I'd like to keep adding to it, I want to get it out as soon as possible, just to give guidance to people who may not know about different legal requirements and financial obligations of a booster club, we want to provide them with that assistance. But also, I, I'd like to keep supplementing it with even further information, like tips from past successful booster leaders, how to, for example, how to stir up parent volunteers, how to approach organizations if you're looking for donations, things like that, that some people may not have experience with. So, we're hoping for that to be a, a really robust guidance and help for the parents that are working so hard to provide those great services to our kids. So, that should be coming out very soon, we're, we're working hard on that, and if anybody wants to give us any suggestions further than that on, on what we're putting in that guidebook, we're happy to get it, please reach out to the Athletic Director, Mary McDonald, and we will be putting it out for feedback before it actually becomes published and given to everyone, so please watch for our solicitation of feedback and input, input on that, the draft of that document, once we have that ready. And that's all I have.
Okay, so on the booster guide, can we make sure that Nancy and Jackie at least have an opportunity to review and see what we need to maybe augment or update in our policies, just that we're all on the same page?
If there is anything to update, we'll make sure that we do updates before it goes out, because we don't want to put anything out that is in contradiction to a policy.
Yep.
So, we'll, yes, definitely.
Yeah, and I know, I know the two of you have had that, right, on your mind, you've been discussing that.
Right, we have, we have been discussing it.
Okay, okay, that'll be great, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Cabral?
Will there any, like, be any opportunities for like students to like, you know, like, support that type of, or like give feedback on like what they would hope like boosters could accomplish, and like how they could do that in that sense, if that makes sense?
Absolutely, we'll send that out to students as well, and we're gonna be having some, a survey to go with it, where you can provide some multiple-choice answers to questions, but there will also be an open response, so that you can add any information you'd like, more eyes on it, the better.
And this is just like a unified, like, all boosters thing, not like particular sports?
Nope, no particular sport, it's gonna be for all boosters, and you make a really great point, we should be sending it out to the students involved with the booster organizations as well, not just for input, but also once it's completed, so that you understand what the boosters can provide or do provide.
Thank you.
Thank you for that input, Mary.
All right, next up, Assistant Superintendent Notes, Mrs. Bruce.
Thank you. So, this year is a bit of an anomaly for our professional development days, because they are so close together, so I just wanted to share that with you. Our first professional development day is October 15th, our second professional development day is November 5th, on those dates, students do not come to school, and the teachers will be participating in professional development. The reason they're so close this year is on a, on a large election year, we tend to have a professional development day on the election day, which is November 5th, and the past few years, we've had professional development in October, which we felt really important to keep that date this year, because it is around security. So, we will be, our staff will be trained, again, on our security system, and I say again, for staff that have been here, but it's really important that they continue revisiting the procedures that we use, and also for new staff. So, I just wanted to alert families to that. The professional development on October 15th will also be, our teachers will also, our whole staff will also be embarking on understanding MTSS, which is our multi-tiered systems of support, it will, there'll be an overview for them, which is something that we are working on calibrating this year, actually, our partnership with the S3 Academy, which I had shared at a previous meeting, that is consistent, comprised of a partnership with the Rennie Center in Boston College that we participated in, that we are participating in. So, we're embarking on that, more information to come on the November 5th PD, more information on the, what, what the content will be for November 5th. Our MCAS is embargoed right now, so we cannot share anything yet, this is very typical with the state, you know, this is a, a practice that happens every year with the state, where we receive the MCAS results, but they are embargoed, we're not allowed to share anything yet, because they're also checking things on their end, revisiting any, any kinks that there might be within the data, and then the full release will come out in October, the end of September, early October. That date has yet to be announced, but please keep your eyes open for that. And also, this week, we welcomed back our interventionists, the final piece to the puzzle. Our interventionists are extremely important members of our staff. They traditionally, the history of the interventionists, our academic interventionists in the district is they were initially here through our Title I Grant, however, we have expanded the program to include some others, some of the other schools besides just RO and EMS, so Blanche Ames has some interventionists as well, so we do have some of those positions in our operating budget. They are, they work, they're not full-time employees, but their product is full-time, and it's lasting forever. They are, we had 19 interventionists that we had a wonderful meeting, an orientation, it was the first time they've all been brought together, we talked about our work, their work, and their importance in the Eastern Public Schools, and really just brought about that open communication, and how, how all the programs are coming together to really foster the growth of our students, so we're very excited.
They are all certified teachers.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, they're highly qualified staff.
And we're very excited, because their energy is amazing, and it's just, it's great. I also just want to alert you to the curriculum leadership team that we've also always referenced, with the name has been changed to the District Instructional Leadership Team, the reason for that is there's more than just curriculum leaders on the team, we have department heads, we have administrators on the team as well. And then the last thing, well, two things, one is, Dr. Cabral talked about Parent Square, another wonderful thing that our tech team has brought to the district is the use of clever. So, if an elementary parent remembers the list of passwords that comes home with the child, clever- child, Clever is now one app that the student will click onto, and all of the products that we're using for wit and wisdom, for IXL, for Bridges, will all be under, housed under that one app. So it's one thing that they need to click into, which is fantastic. And a shout out to, to our director, Olivia Ramos, for really kind of pulling that all in and trying to make it easier for our students, which has been fantastic. That is all in the process of being rolled out. And then lastly, I wasn't sure if Dr. Cabral was going to mention this, but Oliver Ames was ranked 35th in Boston Magazine, so congratulations to the Oliver Ames staff, under the leadership of Principal Kavanaugh. It's, we've moved up a lot.
Yes.
In the years that I've been here, and I'm just really proud of the work that all the schools are doing, because we know the end result is Oliver Ames, and that is a true testament to our entire staff in the Easton Public Schools.
I actually crossed it out, because I couldn't remember if it was 34th or 35th. So I'm glad that you said that, but I had it on here. I actually, yes, I, I actually am going to put out there that I'm putting together a presentation on a lot of data points like that. We have had some significant gains in the district, and I don't think we spend enough time highlighting those. I think people enjoy a great experience in the school district, and they are very happy with the product for the school district. But, you know, we tend to be very humble about not sharing some of those data points, and I, I don't think that does the district a service. So I think it's really important that we share those. So I'm compiling, we have a lot of data points like that, and I don't think many people are aware of it, and they should be very proud of that. And our staff should be very proud of that, so we're going to start shouting it out.
Great. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Brewer? All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
School committee, uh, school committee notes. Nancy?
Uh, not today.
Okay. All right.
It's all been said.
Lauren?
So I also wanted to talk about Parent Square, and I have found it extremely helpful and so accessible to use. There were, at RO particularly, there was a bus delay, and I got a text from Parent Square that, it was just, it was just really nice, so. So thank you for bringing that to the district. And school's off to a great start. I'm looking forward to the school year.
All right, great. Let's see, I don't think there's anything that hasn't been covered. We have our second PACE meeting of the year. Will be next week, so that is the promoting a sustainable Easton, which is a big cross-functional committee made up of representatives from town departments, schools, different boards and committees, and citizens. So looking forward to that happening next week. And then there is a, an MASC workshop that'll be hybrid, so both in-person and online on resolutions next Tuesday night. So I've signed up for that. I'll probably attend virtually. And then they had one, a lunch and learn on public comment on Friday, so I was able to listen to some of it and then had a conflict, but it's recorded, and the slides are out there, and they posted all of that to the website. So even if you didn't sign up in advance, that's out there, and I can certainly send that link out to any committee members who might be interested. But it was a one-hour-long presentation and discussion on some of the changes and best practices for public comment at meetings, so. But I think, yeah, I think that's it for school committee notes as well. All right, so, so next up, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 21a3.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
I'm not sure we have an update.
Okay.
Unless you have one. I do not have an update.
No, so on the second item, do you have? So there are two things there. Okay. Let's go in, let's, let's, we'll go.
If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, exactly, yep, yep. It's been a few weeks since we discussed it.
Okay. Okay. So a motion pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Easton Educators Association power of professional unity and coaches stipends, and in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote, so, DeLuca?
Yes.
Yes.
Star yes, okay. All righty, so in our next meeting, we're, yeah, we're so off of our game when we're in-person only. So our next meeting.
September 26th.
Is Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM, so thank you all for tuning in, and thank you all. We have an audience online.